It is 5:33 PM and at this time I would like to ask Treasurer Chapman to do the invocation thing.
Can you hear me? Okay, let's all bow our heads. Our Heavenly Father, thank you for getting us all here safely tonight in this bad weather and we hope that everybody gets home through this storm tonight that we're getting to have. And I would like to ask that you bless this council tonight as we go forward making decisions for our people here as we govern. And I would like to ask you to bless all the ill, all the children, all of our members of our tribe, bless them dear Lord every day as they go about their days. And I ask that we always make good decisions regarding to the welfare of our people. In Jesus' name, amen.
Right, thank you for that Treasurer Chapman.
Yes.
At this time we'll go to item number two, roll call, declaration of court.
Misty Nono?
Here.
Jordan Canuho?
Here.
George Garda P., here. Carol Chapman?
Here.
Cynthia Butler?
Here.
Donna Hare?
Tichuk.
Jean Evans?
Here.
Sammy Kimball?
Here.
Item number three, approval of the agenda. For any additions, deletions?
I have two additions that are in our electronic packet. Under new business number six, approval of resolution 2526 Bureau of Trust Funds Administrative Authorized Officials. And then we're going to add a number seven, discussion interaction on Pawnee Indian Veterans Homecoming Request. And those are all the changes that I know of.
Okay, Treasurer Chapman?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to ask that I can add an item for discussion and/or approval tonight for discussion and/or approval for my recommendations on the HIP award. I had made recommendations on my report and I just wanted to put that out for discussion and/or action this evening if we could so we could decide whether we're going to proceed with my recommendations or not.
Okay, Secretary Garda P., I had mentioned number six. Is there a number five that I'm missing? I have number four, approval of resolution 2524 ITBC Buffalo herd manager apprenticeship program submission, and then I don't have a number five.
Number three should have been approval of resolution 2523 ITBC FY 2024 herd development transition.
Okay. There's another one, six, seven. And then eight, discussion or actions on recommendations on HIP award. Does that capture your term?
Well, I know these number six and number seven are time-sensitive. Is that one going to be time-sensitive, Treasurer Chapman?
Yes, it is.
Okay, then we can add discussion or action on recommendation of HIP award, on the board.
Any other changes, additions, deletions? I entertain a motion to approve the agenda with changes?
Make a motion.
Got a motion by Treasurer Chapman, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Counselor, or Secretary Garda P.? It's called for the vote?
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Garda P., yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Item number four, Pawnee Business Council travel report and request. For any travel reports or requests needing to be made.
I have a travel request for sovereignty symposium.
Yes.
I think it's June 11th and 12th to the Thursday and Friday. Or 12th and 13th, I apologize.
Okay. Donna, will you be attending sovereignty symposium?
Yes, I already have my approval in.
Okay. Any other travel requests? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve the travel request for sovereignty symposium by Counselor Lemon Butler.
Motion to approve travel request?
Yes.
I'll second it.
No, I'm making a motion.
Yes, Vice President. Second by Secretary Garda P. Let's call for the vote?
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Garda P., yes. Carol Chapman? Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
And under travel report, I want to report that I went to the Southern Plains Travel Health Board tribal leaders convening meeting. This was an annual meeting that they just initiated and it was funded by their native public health resilience grant. This was a sponsored event, so there was no funding request from the tribe in doing or in putting out their information. What they did is they went over all of the areas that the Southern Plains Tribal Health Board covers, epidemiology. I know that we do have a CHAP grant that's funded underneath them and they also go out and look for funding opportunities to pass on to tribes as sub-grants. They did a thorough interview and especially our programs have been, they have been useful to our programs in using their epidemiology department to more or less translate data that we've utilized in our surveys. The second day focused on grant writing workshop and it wasn't a, I guess, traditional grant writing workshop. What they focused on was the data collection and how to interpret your data, the types of forms and surveys that you put out, and looking at the outcomes of the information that's received so you can solicit the type of information that you're needing. Should it be for seeking funding opportunities? Should it be for seeking information as to the needs of the community? And the focus was really on looking at data in a different way and they gave examples of flyers and other documents that were used to put out into the community. And what it did was, you know, they just rated it a pass or fail as to whether it solicited the type of information that it was needed or that was needed in order to do a complete analysis or feasibility study for the tribe. This was given by OU professor, Lancer Stevens, I believe was his name. He came up and did the presentation, so it was a really good introduction, I guess you'd say. There were a lot of health programs there that were representing tribal nations, so that's the information that was brought back. And a couple of slides were also shared with our Tohawee Initiative so we can begin to interpret data also and take those concepts into consideration when we're putting out or seeking our own data. So I just wanted to report that. Okay, item number five, Pawnee Business Council Committee Reports. Do we have any committee reports?
Excuse me, I had a travel report.
Yes.
On the 30th of this last month, I attended a event there in Ponca City at the Osage Nation Casino. And it was for the Oklahoma Municipal League Tribal Municipal Symposium. It was gathering the five tribes together here within our agency area and just networking and trying to understand all of the successes of all the nations and such. And I was able to deliver our key successes that we've had over the last two years. It went very well, it was well-attended, met lots of people, and I met the cause. I'll be talking to Jimmy Justice and to Sunny Evans about maybe some potential work that they can help us with, with our cattle operation. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Item number five, any committee reports? Secretary Garda P.
Well, we had an ag committee meeting last week and I just want to report that we do have the ag store open Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays from 12:30 to 5:30. And also with ag, they are selling fresh produce with Wild Country in Cleveland. Dollar a pound, I think, on different items, tomatoes and peppers. Just want to report that, that's also why we're discussing this agrivoltage again because that was brought up during the ag meeting as well. So hopefully we can get through that and I think that's all I have to report on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me? Yes, George, I had a couple citizens that were wondering if perhaps we weren't going to have some type of reduced pricing of our meats for our tribal members. I'm just going to share that with you, you can take it, whatever you want to do. Thank you.
Thank you, I will bring that up to the next meeting, which we are meeting monthly now.
Any other reports? Yes, Counselor Lemon Hare?
Yes, we have a property committee meeting in land use and property and it's been moved up to the 14th. We usually meet the third Wednesday and this month it's going to be the second.
Thank you. Okay, no other reports, we'll move on to item number six, old business. Number one, approval of resolution 2444 Pawnee Nation College Land Allocation.
Hello, hello. So we got a lease today and we have reviewed it from Vice President Canuho and we are fine with the terms and we have no changes that we want to make to it, so we're good to go if you agree on it.
All right, thank you for that. Has everybody seen the lease with the changes that Vice President recommended? And the only change that we did note was that the signature authority be changed instead of Mr. Chavez Ramirez to Stacy Burns as she is the head of the Pawnee Nation College. Otherwise, we would have had to have gotten something from the board to say that he's authorized to enter into the negotiation. And due to the time sensitive, it was just, or of the matter, it was just easier to change the signature authority. This was forwarded on to Felipe and Stacy to see if they had any recommendations, edits or anything, and as you've heard, there wasn't any. So right now, we're moving on the draft for approval, the draft of the lease for approval, and then we would have to do an action on approval of resolution 2444 since this has been tabled. So if there's a recommendation to either withdraw the lease or deny it or whatever, we'll do, we need two actions tonight.
I have a question.
Yes, Counselor Lemon Butler?
So we would withdraw the resolution because it's actually a land allocation and not an approval of the lease, correct?
Yes.
So would we need to add the lease, approval of the lease to new business since it's a new action?
That's the question, that's for the recommendation of the council and that was one of the questions in the email was whether the council wanted to act on the lease or we wanted to just have it done administratively. What's the pleasure of the council?
Can I just mention to one more thing? So are we following with what we have in the Pawnee Nation Lease Act to where property, I feel like it does give them the administrative authority to do that through property, you know, because it is a land lease, but, I don't know.
Excuse me?
My last thought so.
So that, so that's what, you know, we've been stringing this college around for a while now, this back and forth. We came back, we says, well, you know, we want you to have a lease now, we've created the lease, let's move forward, let's get this done tonight and get it over with. Thank you.
Any other discussions? Okay, so in order to make that happen, back to what Counselor Lemon Butler said, we would need to amend the agenda to approve item number, is it nine or is it just two under old business?
It'll be nine.
Item number nine, or you can add it under new business, item one, and move everything else down.
I'll make the motion to make a withdrawal of old business approval of resolution 2444 for the land allocation and to amend the agenda to add to item number one in new business, discussion and interaction on Pawnee Nation College lease for the, I get this wrong every time I talk to you, Sunny, agric, whatever it's for.
Agrivoltage.
Agrivoltage, whatever.
I'll gladly second both of those for the agrivoltage.
Agrivoltage.
Thank you.
Okay, got a motion on the floor to withdraw resolution 2444 and then to amend the agenda and make the approval of the lease, item number one, and move everything else down.
I second.
Well, it's seconded by Dr. Evans. And so now we're calling for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Garda P., yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Okay, item number one, under new business.
President?
Approval of?
I'll make a motion to approve the lease. I'll make a motion to approve the lease.
I second.
Got a motion on the floor to approve the lease, seconded by, or approval by, a motion by Councilwoman Butler, seconded by Councilwoman here. Any further discussion?
Yes, Madam President?
Yes.
I did have a couple comments real quick before we do approve. One was on the, on the address for the college. I noticed it. It listed it as, what was it, 490 Agency Road. I just want to make sure, I don't believe that's the correct address, so I'll make sure we put the correct address on there.
I think it's 891 Little D Drive.
Yep. So that one, and then on section 10, or section, well, I guess it kind of goes into section 10 too. But section 11, I had a question, which was for property insurance. I just asked if this section was needed based on section 10 recommended changes. Do we have any structures, utilities, fixed infrastructure, or anything on the property being leased that we need to continue to maintain property insurance on? I don't think we do. I think it's just that, you know, that space out there west of the college's greenhouses. But I just want to make sure we, if we needed this section 11 or not, it was just one sentence under the Pawnee Nation of Oklahoma shelf from the date of approval of this lease carry property insurance. I didn't know if that was really needed based off of section 10.
Great question.
Those are my two questions to council of what their thoughts were on that.
Councilwoman here, are you familiar with the insurance as it pertains to, because I don't think it's a, it's not a permanent structure, correct? It's just a, yeah.
I would say this much, it's really the property manager, wherever he's at tonight, he's the one that should be writing these leases up and ensuring that all of the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. I don't think Donna, you know, being property chair, could speak to what has to be in a lease.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we should just go with what he's drafted, right? Without questioning.
Did you hear the discussion, Vice President?
I did, yeah. I just wanted to make sure on that. It doesn't do anything, I mean, it doesn't hurt to keep it in there. So I was just kind of curious, it just seems a little...
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. Councilwoman Butler and Councilwoman here, are you agreeable to approval with changes? So we can change the address?
Yes.
Uh huh.
Thank you. Let's call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Garda P., yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna here?
Uh huh.
Gene Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Item number two, Budget Committee Recommendations. Treasurer Chapman?
Yes. Let me get my stuff up here. Okay, this is for the approval of 1065 Transportation and Safety Tribal Budget, mod number two. And in our packet, it is filled out here. This request was made on 4/9/25 by Rhonda James for our 1065 Transportation and Safety Program. It is tribal funds, and it is, the funding source for this is the IHS construction contract in the amount of $180,000, $185,524. And the purpose of this is for the addition of remaining construction funds at the beginning of 2025 to capital outlay to cover the costs expended for construction in 2025. And the payment from IHS for this ID was deposited on 4/17/23 Pawnee Nation Project FY23 Design Build. And it has attached here the justifications with all the line items in it, as you can see. And on the line items for the budget here, let's see, okay, so this was 70, the budget was $75,887. We've added $180,524, and we have a total now of $256,411. So if there's no more questions, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Got a motion on the floor to approve 1065 Transportation and Safety Tribal Budget Modification Number Two. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Secretary Garda P. No further discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Garda P., yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna here?
Uh huh.
Gene Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Item B, Approval of Resolution 2451 ARPA Allocation School Clothing Assistance Amendment Number Two.
Yes, this was discussed previously, and these are the changes and the amendment to approve the ARPA reallocation for the 2024-2025 school clothing assistance in the amount not to exceed $77,500. And we put in the correct dates, corrected the dates to May 6, right after school's out. And let's see, they'll be available for use by November 1, 2025. And in our documents, Ms. Laura May, our Finance Director, has given additional justification as to why we did this and the discussion of Mr. Black, who recommended this from the Education Department. So, and Ms. Laura May is here with us tonight. So if anybody has any questions on this, it's spending the rest of this money for school clothes, for our members.
Treasurer Chapman?
Yes.
Just for the audience, is this non-jurisdictional? So this is for all of our kids, right?
Right.
Okay. So folks, watch your social media, watch the website, and make sure that you apply for your children on time. Thank you, Carol.
Thank you for clarifying that. If there were any other questions? If not, I'll go ahead and call, make a motion.
I'll second.
Laura, I see your hand is raised. Did you have something to?
Oh, yeah.
(phone rings) I hope you all know that originally this was for last year, but not all of the, first, it was $77,000 that was allocated, and only $30,000 was spent. So this is, the balance for the upcoming school year will be, I believe, $44,000, excuse me, lost my, will be $47,060 for the upcoming school year. And the reason this wasn't, this original resolution wasn't spent in last semester is because there was a freeze on the tribal budgets, and this was tribal funds. And so that's why they didn't spend the money back then. But it is available now for the upcoming school year. I just wanted to clarify that a little.
All right, thank you for that information. Got a motion on the floor by Treasurer Chapman, seconded by Councilwoman Kimball. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for the vote.
I'm sorry, I just had a question. So do we need to change that not to exceed 77 to 47? Isn't that what she just said, that it was $47,060?
No, that's what's remaining.
Okay.
Yeah, it says not to exceed 77.5.
Okay.
Okay, let's call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Garda P., yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna here?
Uh huh.
Gene Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Okay, item number three, Discussion and or Action on Tax Consultant Contract Extension. Who's presenting? Well, this was, yeah, this was the placeholder. I don't know that anybody has spoke to Lyle. This was a placeholder. The tax consultant contract ended, I believe, April the 20th. And what was discussed was doing a no-contract extension because there were still deliverables needing to be made, but that there was not going to be any additional funding to the contract. I know that there was a meeting last week, is that on Friday? Last, a meeting last Thursday, and they were going over all of the redline version and getting it formatted to present to the Governing Documents Committee. That's the extent of where we're at on the contract. And so right now, that's what is being sought, is an extension to the contract. There hasn't been a date or anything thrown out, so it would be up to this body to decide or make that determination as well. It's open for discussion.
I have an opinion.
Yes.
The work that Mary Mashunkashay has done on behalf of our nation has been more than a lot of consultants have brought to the table. She is an expert SMEs, a subject matter expert in taro. She is a subject matter expert in taxation for governing tribes. I would highly recommend that this body consider keeping her. I was really looking forward to hearing her findings and hearing her solutions, finding root cause, all of these discussions that I guess are pending and we're waiting for deliverables. But I would highly encourage you not to cut your nose off to spite your face. You know, I would highly recommend that you move forward with continuing her services. I think that she's going to bring a lot to the table. For those that are watching tonight, we have not asserted our tax rights. We have not asserted our taro rights in a lot of the work that has been here. We had negotiations that were done with TDC. We've had negotiations done with contracts, our contractors here, that have reduced our taro fees down from 5%, 6% down to 2%. That's money coming out of the nation's pocket. That's money that should be here in our general fund to help support the people and all of our initiatives in this government. So don't lose sight of it. Don't lose sight of it. Make them accountable. Let's get, let's get the end result of what Mary has to say, and let's, I encourage you to work diligently to get this done before it goes to Governing Docs. I think that you have to take a hard look at the opportunities that are there that she's going to present to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Butler, do you have a timeline as to the work that still needs to be done with the tax consultant or when it could go to Governing Documents?
No, the conversation that we had was that they had a lot of other additions and some other revisions and recommendations. It brought them together with the tax and HER to get those ideas and stuff out there. And now they know what we're expecting in the redline version of what we wanted to see. So I'm just, as soon as they get their additional revisions and other codes that they wanted to put in there, then it'll come to our table. So, and she didn't give me a timeline on when that would be.
Right, and as we're talking about Governing Docs, I mean, there's a lot of work that has to be done. We haven't had anything created out of Governing Docs except a constitution in three years. It's time that we get things moving. I would tell you that she is the expert, and who's going to work for free? No one's going to work for free. So extend her contract and let her deliver for us. Thank you.
Any other thoughts?
I'll make a recommendation and maybe even a possible motion. I'll make a motion to approve the no-cost extension for 60 days, because one of the things that she wanted to do was orientation for the incoming council and for the department. So I'll do, make a motion for the 60 days.
Got a motion on the floor for a 60-day extension by Councilwoman Butler. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Got a second by Dr. Evans?
I have a question.
Yes, Councilwoman here.
The contract in the, excuse me, in the, in our packet, it has through 2026. Am I...
Where are you at, Donna?
Let me find it. Okay, here we are. It is the Mashunkashay contract in scope. It was in a, sent out by Jamie on March 18.
2024.
2024. But it has, it has, did that change somewhere for the year? It was changed to one year instead of two? Because in this document, it has 2026, from 2024 to 2026.
That makes it easy.
If that's correct, then I withdraw my motion.
Ms. Nelson, do you see that in the email?
Anybody else see? There's, it's marked high importance, and there's two documents in it.
There you go.
Good. So we withdraw the motion, and there will be no action, discussion and or action on tax consultant contract extension, as it is not required or not necessary. Item number four, Approval of Resolution 2523, ITVC FY 2024 HERD Development Grant Submission. Good evening, Sunny.
Good evening, counsel. I wanted to go ahead and defer to Chair Kimball, who has led this effort for, from the Thaddeus Committee for quite some time now, if she would be willing to explain.
Thank you, Sunny. I appreciate that. It's been a complete honor to work with you. So, the background and history of the Pawnee Nation relationship with the Intertribal Buffalo Council began in December 2022 and was formally inducted in December 2023 when Delegate Jimmy Justice presented an eagle feather for the induction ceremony. The feather came from Thaddeus Committee Member Arthur Sunny Fields IV. The present membership includes 83 tribal nations across the United States, from Florida to Alaska. Since joining, we have attended annual meetings, several free trainings, and an emergency planning meeting for newly appropriated federal funding in late 2024. From this emergency funding, we were granted $55,100 to reinforce the fencing around the Big pasture, which is approximately 270 acres east of the tribal reserve buildings on Morris Road. One benefit of the Intertribal Business Buffalo Council membership is an annual funding allocation for tribal herds, the Herd Development Grant. The current Herd Development Grant from fiscal year 2024 opened on 4/15, April 15, and it's going to close on the 15th of May. The remaining necessity for the Thaddeus program before accepting any animals is for safe and low-stress working pens, alleys, crowding tub, and chute. We are waiting on an updated quote, but we anticipate the cost to be around $150,000 for materials and labor to install. This equipment is a vast difference from cattle. We have, they are mean and aggressive buffalo. The working equipment allows us to protect our people and our Thaddeus relatives when we send them through once yearly to place permanent ear tag identification and provide any additional treatments they need to stay healthy. The Intertribal Buffalo Council, led by tribal nations, understands the importance of recognizing tribal sovereignty and thus requires a resolution to apply for this funding. The other current opportunity, should I just continue on? The other current opportunity is the new apprenticeship program open to the first 10 members' tribes to complete the application with resolution. The Intertribal Buffalo Council has developed a connected series of yearly trainings for a certification program in buffalo herd management. They have funding available to support 10 tribes to complete this training by reimbursing salary and fringe benefits for one employee hired by the tribe for one year and paying all travel expenses for that employee to receive the training. The tribe must agree to continue employment for this individual after the year ends and... The tribe must agree to continue employment for this individual after the year ends, and they do not need to be a new hire. This training will allow us to set up the program with deliberation and care, learning from those with experience and shared values. Thank you, Sunny, for that comprehensive white paper. It's my pleasure to make a motion to approve resolution 2523, the ITBC fiscal year 24 HERD Development and Grant Submission.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Kimball to approve resolution 2524?
I'll make that motion.
Hold on, 2523. 2523 ITBC fiscal year 2024 HERD Development Grant Submission. And I believe it was seconded by Dr. Evans, right? Yeah, already seconded. Okay, if no further discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Garder, yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Jeanne Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
It's my pleasure also to make a motion to approve resolution 2524 Buffalo Herd Manager Apprenticeship Program Submission.
Okay, item, item number five, approval of resolution 2524. Got a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Kimball to approve the resolution. Second by Treasurer Chapman. Any discussion? No discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Garder, yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Jeanne Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Item number six, discussion and/or action on resolution 2525 Native American Bank Term Sheet.
It's number five.
Hello, counsel. First off, just want to thank y'all all for being at the ribbon cutting event yesterday. It was very emotional and a magnificent day, so thank y'all for being there. I know Cindy couldn't be there, but the food was delicious, so thank you as well. But what this is for is back in February 4th, council approved resolution 2510 to do the term sheet with Native American Banks. We went back and was working with Native American Bank, myself, and Ascension on getting this amendment to our current loan taken care of. So what this resolution referenced is approving that amendment to our current loan that mirrors all the terms and amount that was approved on February 4th. So it went through their legal team. I talked with AG Vance, we touched base. Everything's pretty similar to the original loan that was in there, and just asked for approval on the amendment.
Thank you for that, Brian. Counsel, do you have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Councilwoman Kimball.
Does this need to be vetted by our incorporators, or are they off the table for it?
This is under Pawnee Nation's name, so this one is based off the term sheet that was approved on 20, on February 4th by Nation, so it goes directly to the Nation, and that's...
To here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
If there is no further discussion, I'll take a motion to either approve or deny the resolution 2525 for the Native American Bank Term Sheet.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Butler, second by Dr. Evans. Let's call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Garder, yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Jeanne Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Item number, thank you, Brian. Item number seven, approval of resolution 2526 Bureau of Trust Funds Administration Authorized Officials. Treasurer Chapman, if you want to present.
Oh, is the, I, let's see, I'll have Laura May do it. Yeah.
Thank you. What the reservation is for, is right now, we're going through, doing our audit. Can y'all hear me okay? I'm not buzzing or anything, am I?
No, you're fine.
I usually, okay, thank you. We're going through the audit prep work right now, and there are some proceeds of labor accounts that are missing, and the senior accountant is unable to get the cash accounts completed without those. And so what this is saying here, well, and two, the form needs to get updated because the last time it was updated was in 2022. And so what this form is for the BIA tribal officials to be able to request financial documents, you know, the oil and gas and the farming and grazing information from BIA. And the ones that are on the list right now, or that, that we put on, is president, treasurer, seat number two, which is Ms. Hare, and the executive director. And the reason we didn't put on, or the reason I didn't put on the vice president and the secretary at this moment is because the term, their term, it's in between terms, and so this has a, has a date on it. So, in addition, if council agrees, we have a new, I guess you all know that Mr. Coit, Mr. Stephen Coit, who used to be our trust, our trust officer, he's retired. And so now there's a gentleman named Donnie Smith, Jr., who has taken over that, his spot. And so I asked him if staff could be added to this, and then he sent an email, and I gave you all a copy of his email, and he said that they do encourage staff to request. And so I did request on another form for Penny, as senior accountant, and myself as acting finance director, to only request the, it would be like statements, financial statements for those, for those accounts. And so basically, that's what this is, is just authorizing the, the council people to be able to get records and to investment, give investment instruction, and, and get, you know, information on these accounts, whereas the chief staff would only be able to request finance, financial information. And I think that's pretty much it, except for the form does need updating, it will need manual signatures, and council can update this at any time that they, that they desire, as long as they do it by resolution. Does anyone have any questions for me? And the reason, and thank you so much for putting this on your agenda, because like I said, we're right now working, doing pre-audit work, and so without the financial documents, it's kind of holding up, you know, a very important part of the pre-audit work.
All right, thank you for that, Laura May. Just pointing out just what she said, too, that it can be updated, most notably, you know, after the seating of the two other positions, if that needed to be changed, or in addition, when we get a permanent finance director, it will have to be changed as well. So that's good that you noted that. If no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
So, new Treasurer Chapman?
It was me and her.
Okay, got a motion on the floor by Treasurer Chapman, second by Councilwoman Butler. Let's call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Garder, yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Jeanne Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Item number eight, discussion and/or action on Pawnee Indian Veterans Homecoming Request. We do have the president that's here. My Councilwoman Hare, I don't know if you want to discuss that you have polled the committee members for their recommendation, and due to the time sensitivity, that's why it's being presented to the council now.
Yes, this request came to the council, and so the president and I polled my committee to see if they would be in favor of, you know, it going directly to the council, and the majority said yes.
In your packet is the three items that they are requesting. Item number one, Pawnee Indian Veterans Homecoming to be held July 3rd through 6, 2025, utilization of the Mo's Yellow Horse Field for the event, and number three, the sole or primary use of the roundhouse during the same dates in the case of inclement weather. It's open for discussion. Yes, Vice President.
Yeah, no, we had this discussion last year on this as well, and I'm going to just bring it back up again, just so that our tribal members understand just where I'm coming from on this as well, just that portion of the sole, sole and primary use of the roundhouse during the same date. You know, I know that there, at times, we have tribal members who may have loved ones who passed away during the homecoming, and I'm still of the, of the impression and the mindset of allowing those tribal members to use whichever facility they, they choose to, and if that ends up being the roundhouse, I'm not of the position to have our staff, or whomever, deny them that, that use because the veterans want to use this, this facility for, for the homecoming. So that's just continuing where I stand on that as well. And so if this is looped into the, the motion or the approval of it, then I'll, I'll be a no vote on that. So I just wanted to give my reasoning, if that's the case, why it would be a no vote.
Thank you, Vice President. Further discussion?
This is Sammy.
Yes.
Thank you, Vice President Canuho, for, for your feedback. For me, I'm going to lean on the Nesharo Council and their thoughts about all of this from last year. We're mindful of, of these instances that happen. We know when it can ever predict a family going into mourning and having to take care of this. We do have other options available. I think it's important that, that the planning committee, the money that is spent on this event and generated through fundraising and such, and through donations and such, really have to be considered. And I don't think it's fair for them to, just to be in limbo. I, I am going to vote yes on this, and that's my position, because they have, they have a bunch of youth activities, they have a race, they have a walk, they've got a parade going on, there, there's a lot going on. And you'll recall several years ago where everything was stopped for several days, and it was even requested that we not even be like 100 feet from that roundhouse, which is kind of impossible when you have like, you know, 1,000 people. So I, I would just say, I would hope that this council would consider that. It is one of our biggest flagship events for the nation. It has grown, it, it makes us all proud. We have a lot of our own visitors, we have nice camps, and I would really like to see this just continue as is. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilwoman Kimball. Secretary Garderby?
Yeah, Vice President Canuho, thank you for those comments. I agree with what you're saying. However, I, I would hope that we prevent anything from happening during this homecoming weekend, as, as did before. I agree with Sammy as well, that I'm going to be a yes on this, just to prevent that from happening again, to, to have the roundhouse dedicated to the veterans during this, this event. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilwoman Hare?
I have reservations about it, because just of all the years that I was, you know, with Pawnee Nation, and we always gave, you know, the families priority of whichever one, whichever building that they wanted to use. I understand, you know, we have a lot of out, out of town people come in, and we have a lot of, you know, people coming back home, and I, and I know it can be disruptive, and so I'm, I'm really torn on this vote. Last year, I was pretty much a solid no, and I'm, I'm, I, I am still, I'm torn on it.
Any other counsel want to contribute?
I would like to say that I would be a yes, a yes for it. I just really feel like so many people come home and have it in their heart to be together over there, and I really respect, you know, deaths and, and that. I respect the traditions and the customs, and I, I agree that, you know, we should support and continue to not put restrictions because it had a terrible effect on our people overall. I take it from the whole picture on that, having respect, deep respect for, for all sides, but I am going to go for what is best for, I feel is best for all Pawnee people. That's my comments.
Thank you.
If I could.
Dr. Evans?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. You know, it's kind of a clash of cultural issues. I think, and that makes it hard, and, and our, our way of handling death has been, and the tribe's been an evolving issue anyway. I, I feel that I came to Pawnee so that I could be a, hopefully have, build a home that would be an anchor to my family, to be a place where people could still feel like home from wherever they are in the world. And, and the biggest representation of that is that homecoming, you know? And it's super important, and it, it gets damaged. It, and I know for my family, it was damaged from, from when that happened. I, I think, yes, I respect, well, you know, the, the families and, and their needs, and, and I want us as a people to, to come together and to take care of ourselves, of each other when there's a death, when there's, when there's needs, but there's also needs of, of being a people and being unified. I think it's something that's, that's more important than most people think about, and I think it's so important. So I, I would beg that we, we put that particular weekend as a special time, you know, that's just different. So I appreciate you listening to me.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. But this time, we'll entertain a motion to either approve or deny the request from the Pawnee Indian Veterans Organization?
This will be my last motion. I'm honored to, to make a motion to provide the Pawnee Indian Veterans Organization the, for homecoming July... I'm honored to make a motion to provide the Pawnee Indian Veterans Organization, the, for Homecoming July 3rd through 6, 2025. The utilization of the Moses Yellow Horse Field and sole and primary use of the roundhouse during these same dates, should there be inclement weather. Best to you.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Kimball, second by Secretary Garder?
If I could, just to break the, I know he beat me to it, but... But as my last...
I withdraw my second.
As my last second.
You're right, I didn't think about that, sorry Doc.
Thank you, too fast for me, too quick on the draw.
He's withdrawn his second.
Oh, thank you. Second, but it's such an important thing and just to say, I'm very proud that there are people who do the work that's involved and the work is immense to make this happen. And just proud that we have done this for, I don't know, how many years has this been going on now?
World War I.
So incredible and thank you.
All right, no further discussion, we'll call the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
No.
George Garder, yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
No.
Donna Hare?
I was a no until the veteran on our Council spoke and so with that, I'm gonna go with yes.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Noah Eady?
Thank you.
Noah, thank you very much, Business Council. I know I've been really tounded from a lot of phone calls and emails and everything about the dates, you know, about the dates for the homecoming. I didn't want to put anything out, but I did want to come up here and ask you guys first if it's okay if we could utilize this area. Same thing as last year, last year went really well and really good and I really thank you guys, you know, for your guys' support and so I can get this thing started and let everybody know those official dates because that's kind of a big thing that everybody was asking all of our people. They're trying to take off work and vacation time to be here, you know, for that. And it is, and it is a big weekend for, you know, all of our, you know, people that do come and participate in all these events and everything. So I thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number nine, discussion and or action on HIPAA award recommendations.
Yes, this is concerning an item that came before the Budget Committee about three or four weeks ago. And it was tabled and brought to the Pawnee Business Council for a decision because it was really unique in that we did not apply for a $60,000 award. And we were requested to administer it to one person, but we as a body have never done that. We have always tried to be equal and treat all of our citizens equally and give all of the opportunity. So as a result of discussion on this, I was charged with looking into it and seeing what transpired for us to get to this point of great confusion and discussion on this. And I submitted my report to the Pawnee Business Council so far on what I found out from investigating. And all the Council has this, I hope you've all read it. Tonight, what I'm asking is, after you've read it, I have made some recommendations concerning this and there are six recommendations. After reviewing the whole situation of what happened, to address this, to correct it, to put some kind of procedures and oversight in place so that, so that anything confusing like this does not happen again. Now, I understand that the offer was made by President to form a committee to do this and to be on it. But I would prefer that I, as Treasurer, proceed with these recommendations and work with the members of the Pawnee Business Council on how to proceed further to prevent this from ever happening again. I just feel like it should be the Council's decision, the Council should be knowing because they obviously have been bypassed in a lot of this right here that happened in awarding one family this $60,000. And my recommendation is that we re-go back to the Office of Self-Governance and ask if this award can be given to, that the Council gets to continue to award all, give all of our people and all of our families who are in need of home repair, an opportunity to participate in this award rather than bowing to a federal agency telling us to give it to one family. So that's what this is all about. I would like to ask the Council, if I can go as Treasurer, go ahead and start, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, which I recommended here, and proceed and report back and work with the Council directly on this. That's what this is about.
Could you read, could you read those points first, please?
The recommendations?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Because I can't find it anywhere.
Okay. Number one is immediately suspend the transfer and administration of HIPAA funds until a full review is completed. Conduct an internal investigation into how negotiations and amendments were carried out without PBC consent. Establish clear policies and oversight procedures for future amendments to the self-governance agreement. And clarify jurisdiction and authority between the Office of Self-Governance and 638 contracting for HIPAA program oversight. Number five, develop or formalize a transparent application process for housing programs, including defined roles for the Pawnee Nation Housing Authority and the Treasurer's Office. And six, communicate with the Office of Self-Governance to correct procedural breakdowns and reassert PBC's decision-making authority. We did not apply for this money, we did not have a HIPAA program, we did not apply for it, we did not know it was applied for and it ended up with us, which is what caused all of this to happen. So that, it's, it's, it needs to be addressed so that, so that doesn't happen again. I've just seen great confusion in the, in the Budget Meeting where this came up, it was just, it was just great confusion. And these steps need to be taken and worked with the Council to come up with some policies and some directions so that, so that it does not happen again. And this is all for fairness and equality for all of our Pawnee people. So, is there any questions?
Questions, discussion?
Yeah.
Councilwoman here?
So I can see getting, going through your, the six items that you're proposing and getting a process in place. I did want to talk about the HIPAA funding from my knowledge and I think there, and I could be wrong on this, I think there might be absence of institutional memory on the Budget Committee and where it used to, or with this funding, the people would apply directly to Anadarko for this funding. And there was only, when I worked in the Executive Office, there was only about 20,000 a year that was made available and you, which can't really do a house for 20,000, but that was it and they would, I don't remember if they had a couple of years of funding where they were able to, you know, get a mount where you could do one house. But there were a number of houses done here in Pawnee through that program. And when, I know that at one point we wanted the housing to take it and, you know, and it seems very logical for it to be under housing. And so, yeah, I just wanted to add that, that this funding a lot of times is pursued by the individual. And then what the funding agencies will do in a lot of times for like special contracts or something is they will award it to a 638 contract. So if we've gone self-governance and they probably awarded it to that self-governance contract. It just kind of sits out there, this HIPAA, this HIPAA funding and it has for many decades.
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman here. I think the issue here is, that's understandable, but we are self-governance, we did not have a HIPAA program in place. And the real issue is that this was not, the negotiations were not made by anyone from this Council, who, it was made by an outside person.
Or an employee.
Or an employee, right. So that was the real issue here, is that it was not negotiated by us. It's really reasserting our decision-making authority that we should be the body that does this, not an outside individual. That is really what this is about because it's ending up with one family and it should be to where we as a government can distribute it evenly to many needy families. So that's the real issue here, so.
So Treasurer Chapman, I have a comment. I have a reputation of being frank and honest and transparent and transparency is so needed. It's very underhanded to not share that knowledge. It's unfortunate that there are people that are very aware of all of these opportunities, but they're not sharing it and that's unfortunate. It should have really gone to one of our divisions and say, you know, at least make them aware. I was not aware of it and I don't begrudge anybody for applying for something, but when you do it on the onus of the nation and you're, and you're sending emails back and forth through our, through our email system and engaging our employees and such, and we don't have an idea of what's going on and it comes into budget and we don't have any idea and we scrutinize everything that's coming in there, folks. It's your money, it's your money. So when that came up, I was perplexed as well. So I think we need to do a better job and I think that, I like your idea. People need to be held accountable, people need to be transparent and not keep secrets. That's what it feels like, so I'm just saying that much, you know? Don't be afraid to say it, let's give everybody an opportunity. I know many folks, and I'm gonna get there because I've got an open forum thing that I want to talk about, but I'll just leave it right there. I think that we can do better. Thank you, thank you.
Yes, Doctor Evans?
Yes, I just wanted to ask, if anybody knows, is this an award that can be spread between many people or is it, or is it many people could apply for separate lots of money?
I can answer that. Okay, the award was, there was a directive given that we take it. We were told to take it and to give it to only one family. So that was the question that came up in the Budget Committee meeting and then came to the Council. That's what I'm asking here in recommendations, is to let me go find out and negotiate as a Council member and the Treasurer with the Office of Self-Governance to find out, can this be given out to many needy families instead of one? So that's what that is.
And I can see with self-governance, we can do that with anything, pretty much, but what's in our history? Yeah, what's in the history of that? Donna, do you know as far as how this worked in the past?
It was one, there was enough from Anadarko, for Pawnee, for, it was $20,000 and so, you know, that's all the money there is and so, and like I said, people, from my knowledge, people have applied directly to the area office. So if we don't, you know, aren't in agreement with this, then we're gonna be denying somebody, you know, renovation of a home.
I would like to comment to that. I'm gonna go back to the research that was done on it. There was a $20,000 award, original award, and there was another person negotiating this. It is documented. It was not anyone on this Council that negotiated this. Another person negotiated it for their family and this person requested an additional 40-some thousand dollars to come to the total of 60 to be given to only one family, the family they were representing. So that is what we're dealing with here. It is not just one 20,000. The additional money was requested by the person negotiating, which wasn't this Council, and it was to give that total 60 to only one family. To me, as Treasurer, this is wrong, we should be awarding many needy families, not one family. That is what is the issue here. So I thought that was just beyond bad enough, it wasn't us. The extra 40 was to also request it specifically that it go to the one family.
Aren't grants, aren't grants supposed to be giving out, given out to any and everybody? Aren't grants supposed to be that way? If you get a grant in for $60,000, aren't you supposed to spread the wealth a little bit and, you know, fix your UCA's sink and, you know, maybe put some interior doors in somebody's house? Isn't that what it's all about or does somebody just get a hold of some of $60,000 and not be accountable?
That would be a question for the Southern Plains Regional Office, who made the award.
Yeah, because my understanding is, I mean, some grants are for individuals and some are for programmatic and for groups.
Well, this came from Budget Committee because Budget Committee recommended it come to the Council and as you remember, the Council discussed it. And we have not traditionally just given that large of an amount, which we never applied for, which we were directed to do by, I mean, we didn't apply for it, we didn't even have a HIPAA program and...
Is this supposed to be under a program though?
It's a special, it's deemed a special project and the money is earmarked by Southern Plains Regional Office and awarded to the nation.
There was great, there was, thank you, there was great confusion. This is, in doing the research, there are so many offices involved in it. It was tossed around like a hot potato. It's been over a year it's been tossed around so much because we did not have a HIPAA program. And it, in the past, this Council has tried to be fair and equal to let many families, as many as we can award, have the assistance. For me, for the extra 40,000 to go to this family is just, I think that I should be allowed to follow these recommendations and report back because your question would get answered too.
Because really, I just want to understand because it's...
I can say more about it if you want, I mean, here's another...
I just want to make a comment, why doesn't the, I wonder why the BIA doesn't just administer it? It comes from Southern Plains, BIA is capable.
They couldn't take, it was between a 638 and the Office of Self-Governance, that's why it just kept hitting.
Well, if we don't, if we haven't 638 yet, then it's still at the BIA level. So then why don't they, why aren't they finding the subcontractors and doing all of the work?
I don't know, it's very, it's a very unusual situation all the way around and there are so many people involved in it and so many offices. Bottom line is, they're all, we're back to who, who negotiated this? It wasn't us. Who negotiated it?
Right. Who enlisted our employees to do the work? It wasn't, it wasn't anybody at this table and it wasn't anybody within our leadership team, within the nation. And that, and that's the problem, that's the problem. It's thrown over the fence. They applied for it, good for them, but don't use, don't use our staff to try to facilitate this and us not even know that this is going on. And secondly, if indeed they're gonna go through the Bureau or they're gonna go through Southern Plains, then those are the people that should be administering it. I don't believe that this, that this body needs to, our nation needs to deal with it, we've got a housing office that... We've got a housing office that's just right across the road. They're good at it. That's their expertise. And if they're, and if misjustice and Cynthia Butler are willing to deal, then good for them. But it, it, it should not, it should not have gone this, at this angle. I think it should have been a, a lot easier being transparent and saying, hey, you know, we, we can do this, and we can do that. This is available. We'd like to open a HIP program under our self-governance. That, that's just good leadership. I mean, that's business 101. You share, you're being transparent, you're telling people what's available. Not this hidden thing and, and under, it feels like under the table kind of stuff. And I'm not trying to insinuate it's like that, but it feels like that. Yeah, I, I would agree. I, I don't think that we need to be bothered with that money, but I do support your, your thing.
You're going to make the motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion, and you go ahead and do your research.
I got one down here, a motion down here.
Oh, oh.
Councilwoman Butler.
I'll second.
But, but I did like, because, you know, who's going to work on this, was my next question. So, and I know President Nettle had suggested that maybe a committee was formed, and if you would chair that, to make sure that the policies and all of that are put into place. I think that that's an important part of it. So if you make the motion, Donna, then that's my only recommendation for that, is for the committee and for you to work with the staff to, to figure out what needs to be happening, what needs to be put in place, along with your research on the six items.
Can we amend number two, then, to include the committee and not just Treasurer Chapman?
Can you repeat that?
To conduct that internal investigation through your committee, I mean, through the committee that President, Madam President has suggested.
Yes. I would like to also add to that, if I could, that the members, that some of the council members be on that committee also. So that the council is very aware in the decision-making also.
But yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. I, I was in that Budget Committee meeting as well, and I, I did also think this was a problem, because we don't just cater to, to one person, or one family. But, you know, I don't want to deny anybody who's, who's gone out to do their diligence to try to get this funding, but as you guys have said, we, we didn't know about this, or I didn't hear about this. So, you know, there's a problem there, obviously. So, so I'm in favor of Madam President's suggestion to have a committee for this, and to have you chair it, Treasurer Chapman, because it is a problem. So we need to, we need to look at this, and, you know, I just have a question. Have the funds been transferred anywhere yet? Or are they waiting for a resolution to approve everything?
We have, there have been no funds deposited, correct? Ms. Laura May? There have been no funds deposited, have there?
They haven't transferred any funds to the Pawnee Nation, and I check almost every other day to, to look and make sure.
Right. Well, one of the recommendations is that we, that we immediately suspend the transfer to find out if we can give it to more than one family. And then make the recommendation back. So that's part of it, too, so.
Yeah, I would definitely be agreeable if you, you add that last part, to see if we can talk with them and negotiate something for more, more people than, than one. Okay. So I'll make the motion to go ahead and go look at the recommendations that has been made on the HIP award by Treasurer Chapman.
And Councilwoman Kimball, did you still want a second?
I'll second, thank you.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilwoman here, a second by Councilwoman Kimball. Let's call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Gardner, P.S. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Ahoh.
Gene Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Item number eight, open forum. Do you have any further? Yes, Council?
So, I made a mistake, and the document that I pulled up, the contract, we didn't have one in our packet, so I pulled up the contract, and it was not the signed, it wasn't the one that's in force. So the one that has been signed by the President is due the 25th, I mean, yeah, yeah, this is 2025. It expires.
Talking about the tax consulting contract.
So I would like to open that for reconsideration on this important issue.
For Mary Mashantashay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going back to item number two, under new business discussion and/or action on tax consulting, contract extension. And previously, we had a motion on the table for a 60-day extension by Councilwoman Pollard. Do we want to proceed with that, or?
Yes.
I'll, I'll restate my motion, yes, for 60 days, no cost extension.
Okay, and it was previously seconded by Dr. Evans. Did you want to agree to the motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So let's call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Gardner, P.S. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Ahoh.
Gene Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Okay, now, item number eight, open forum.
President Nettle?
Yes.
I have a topic that I'd like to discuss this evening, and if you'll bear with me, counsel. This is open forum. Is my mic, yeah, my mic's on, but maybe my batteries get... Is that better? Oh, good. Thank you. I would like to take some time out during open forum to speak to the Akadaru and express myself this evening. I'd like to address each of you this evening. Many may know that I have been an elected council member for 10 years, beginning in May of 2015. It has been an incredible honor and privilege, and one that I will hold close to my heart for all of my days. I have never been a politician, but a servant for the people. My job was to ensure and oversee economic growth, ensure that best business practices were in place in our government, ensure that we were protected by those who would take advantage, ensure that the leader of our day-to-day operations also had your best interests at hand. I'm about government transparency, meaning that my commitment for open and honest communication about our operations and decisions, how we spend your money, open feedback, and offering opportunities and encouragement through my vast committee work. Transparency is, is critical for fostering public trust, holding officials accountable, and ensuring good governance. You see, it has never been about me ever, but all about you, the children and our children yet to come, as far as our bloodlines go. We all know I lost my council seat on May the 3rd by a large number of votes, and numbers don't lie. I believe my loss was primarily brought on by those that have a vested interest in our tribal monies and, and big jobs. You see, I did not support following a lot of the initiatives, including undrip, the United Nations Declaration of Respect for Indigenous Peoples. I'm certain that this is probably a good law for small, poor countries. But we're a tribal nation, and the only nation that signed up and instituted it as a law in 1920, in 2021. I voted no, as did two others at this table, but the motion was passed by four sitting here today. I also did not support the declaration, the Declaration of Respect, which is part of undrip, that supports actions against council members, commissioners, and committees. I feel it should also be inclusive of employees and tribal members as well. That is why I support an ethics policy be put in place to govern missteps and holds all accountable. I also did not support the lease renewal of Building One for seed preservation for the simple and logical reason that the nation needed the office space due to our growth. And please be mindful that seed preservation, although a worthy and admired project, is not owned by the nation, but is an independent business of the, from away from the nation. I did not support Pawnee Star, Pawnee Evening Star LLC, which was designed as a grant foundation to write grant proposals on behalf of the Pawnees. The issue I had is that the foundation would receive the money and take a percentage off the top, which is a normal thing, but we could not agree on how much the foundation would keep. Was it 5%, 10%, 20%? And as it would be, they wrote a grant proposal on behalf of the museum for $25,000, which they received that grant funding. Instead of the check coming over to the nation's bank account, it was written to the chairperson of the museum board. She had to have it put in her own personal account. This is not transparency, and it is unethical, and I chose not to be a part of it. Tonight, the council was made aware of misconduct that started last August, and I think we've wrapped that up with the fiduciary responsibilities of our treasurer in deciding whether we need a HIP program or not. And that will be investigated, and we've got a team that will be working on that, so I won't let that go. Let's not forget the $60,000 that was allocated to improve a home on Yola Horse that only one family benefited. All the while, we had elders that needed plumbing work, interior doors, roof repair, but the majority of, of the funding was spent on that one home. That is egregious. Lastly, I'd like to circle back to our last meeting, where I was publicly attacked and chastised without warrant. As it turns out, whoever started the rumors would not come forward with a written statement. The council had nothing to go on to act on the complaint. Consequently, I was vindicted and found not guilty. Ha ha. If you will, I highly recommend that this council put together a complaint process, so this does not happen to another person. It's unfortunate that this happened during the election campaign. I felt like my hands were tied, as President Nettle directed me to not speak to employees, to not engage with my committee work, and virtually suppressed me without due process. In every sense, unprofessional collusion and impeded our election process, because she would not call me, she would not return my calls, she would not return my texts or emails, which I found egregious in every sense. I hate to beat a dead horse, but it certainly put a line in the sand and left me a very big disadvantage. President Nettle's actions and/or inactions were without merit outside the scope of her authority. They were egregious and can be seen as election tampering. She didn't, she did her best to keep me suppressed. I encourage action against those that behave as such. So when you have all these truths going on that benefit only certain individuals, you as council members have a moral obligation to our nation's citizens to speak the truth, to stand up and not allow this type of egregious collusion and cronyism to exist within our nation. Being a council member is not about what the nation can do for you and yours, it's about being a servant to the people every hour of every day, and not get wealthy off the backs of the people by lining your own pockets. It's all about ethics, it's about transparency, it's about doing the right thing for the betterment of all. As I leave this council table tonight, I want to also remind those that are left to have integrity. Leave your egos at the door, stop the gossip and rumor mill, and be, and mature, and grow, and grow maturity into the role that you've been elected to do. I have heard many discussions about some of you on the north side of the table laughing, making faces, and making snide remarks while I'm speaking. That has not gone unnoticed by our constituents. And because we are recorded and filmed, and your actions are obvious, so those observations should be taken and learned from. We are going to be challenged by the Trump administration funding cuts. Let's all try to think outside the box for all of us. That's a jixtehu.
Thank you for your statement. Any other announcements for open forum?
I have a comment?
Yes.
I would just like to thank Councilwoman Kimball for 10 years of service to our Pawnee people. Your honesty will be missed in dealing with our budgets, because I know you're on the Budget Committee. So I will really, really miss your input, because you do have a lot of expertise in that area. And thank you for your service again, for the 10 years.
Yes, Councilwoman Hare.
Yes, I'd like to echo that and thank Sammy Kimball and Gene Evans for their service on the Pawnee Business Council.
I too would like to echo as well, and I know we haven't always aligned politically, but, and I probably have made some stupid faces, so if I have, I apologize. But thank you, guys. I know it hasn't been easy, but thank you.
Yes, Dr. Evans.
Thank you for recognizing, recognizing me. I've been honored to serve in this last term. I have, as I do throughout my life. I have tried to always do the, the right thing. Not the political thing, not, not something that is one group or another, but, but to do the right thing. I have tried to create unity and, and help us to, to focus. And I've got to say that I feel that each person on this council has tried to do the best job they can, in their own style. And there have been many times that we have disagreed. But in our government, there's a built-in problem, as I see it. It's, it's built in as leadership by committee. And it's very hard to provide any followable, that's a word, direction to lead the people. And I, and I would challenge our upcoming council to, to keep that in mind, that it's, you know, yes, it's, our, we have such a weird job, because there's, there's a legislative side, there's almost a judicial side to this, that, that probably needs to be looked into and separated from us. And it's easy to forget the leadership side. So, you know, I would, I would sure, and I know we need to have debate, so that people can know the issues and know what's going on, and, and some of that needs to be in a, in a public way. But at the end of the day, we need to be thinking of where we want the people to go, and we need to be thinking about a five-year plan, a 10-year plan, a 20-year plan, and we've struggled to, to come up with, or even to talk about strategic planning in that sense. And I know there's a lot going on, so I don't want to blame anybody, because, you know, it's not one of us, it's all of us, and, and, but that's a focus. You know, think about it. Provide leadership, such good people, surrounded by such good people here, who I guarantee you, all of you, if you wonder, they're all, I guarantee you, every single one of them wants to do the best they can for you. So it's good to believe in our people. So, thank you. Thank you for letting me serve for this time.
Thank you for your statement, Dr. Evans. Do we have...
President?
Yes, Vice President.
I just want to say to both Councilwoman Kimball and Councilman Evans as well, just appreciating your time on council. Councilwoman Kimball, your 10 years of service to the Pawnee Nation has been one that's been marked with a lot of good leadership, a lot of heart, a lot of dedication, and a lot of our tribal members are beneficiaries of the hard work that you put into, that you would bring, that you would bring to the council. Tonight's a reflection of that, with the advancement of the buffalo herd, that you've been working to bring that to our land. And so it's, you know, markings of the work that you've continued to do throughout your time in office, and it's been a pleasure working alongside you as well. We have not seen eye to eye on certain things. It's evident tonight is one of the items we voted opposed on. So it's always good to be able to share those disagreements and our efforts to do what's best for the people and what we believe, and still be able to continue to work together. So I appreciate your work, coun... So I appreciate your work, Councilwoman Kimball. And then Councilman Evans, I just appreciate the work and the time serving with you in these past four years as well, just your take on items and your genuineness to see it from a vantage point that we may not see at times, and your thoughts behind that as well. It's always interesting to hear what your take is on certain items, and it brings certain things up to us as a council to reflect and think about as well as we look at those items as well. And so you've been very pivotal in also serving, especially during your first couple of years of council as far as we were still trying to navigate through coming out of COVID and everything of that nature with your background. So it's been helpful in that area as well. This council's been a great council to work with and to serve. And I know our Lord has blessed us as a nation to have this council be cohesive as we are and still have our differences to work together. And so I just appreciate both Councilwoman Kimball, Councilman Evans, and the rest of our council together, just working together to do what we know is best for the Pawnee Nation as a whole. And as I look forward to serving alongside our council coming forward here pretty soon, it's going to be interesting to see how we can continue to band together on issues and items to what's best for our people. COVID was a matter in 2020, 2021 that we had to face and meet head-on. This new administration is going to be our next big challenge that we're going to have to navigate and see how we can move forward, looking at other areas of how we can continue to sustain the government, but also to provide those services to our people that they need as well. So just thank you too for your time, your service, and your thoughts and your words tonight as well. They're well taken by me. And just again, thank you for what you've done. And that's all I have to say. Madam President?
Thank you, Vice President.
I'm sorry. I was remiss in not sharing this with you. One of the things that happened at that last meeting when I was attacked verbally and people were, anyways, was that the meeting was cut short after our executive session. After all of that went down, we had an executive session the following week and went into do research and figure out what really went down. And it's unfortunate that the meeting has actually been taken off the social media platform. And the notes that were provided to explain the actions or result of our executive session are so dark you can't read them. So I would like to ask, Dr. Evans, can you read it? Because I can't see it. Please. And this is just for the knowledge of those that, you know, the 1,500 hits that were on that meeting, so that they'll know what exactly happened.
Listen, you want me to read?
Uh huh, the whole gray part.
Oh goodness. Let's see if I can, I can't make it any larger. Wouldn't you know it?
I know, you can't make it larger.
Hmm.
Can you read that? Do you have it on your, on the internet? It's on my phone.
Somebody else can, yeah. My vision's not that great anymore, anyway.
It says, please.
Meeting on April 28, 2025. As a courtesy, we are providing the following information in script form, and we apologize for any inconvenience. On item A, discussion interaction on complaints, there is no action. Madam President, the intention of this meeting was to hear from the Election Commission on the events that took place on February 23, 2025. Due to the absence of the Election Commission, we found that the allegations in the complaint letters received have been found unsustainable, and there have been no findings of wrongdoing by Councilwoman Kimball. This matter is hereby closed. Adjournment, motion to adjourn was made by Councilwoman Butler, seconded by Dr. Evans. Call for the vote, all in favor of adjournment.
Thank you very much. I did want to vindicate myself and just make that known because, like I said, the meeting is off our social media and this statement you can't even read. So thank you for that. Ms. Nelson, I appreciate that. And with that, I'm done. Thank you.
Councilwoman Butler.
I just wanted to echo what a lot of everybody else had said, and Ms. Kimball. We've never really seen eye to eye politically on a lot of things. And that's fine, that's good. You made me think a lot of times.
I'm not a politician.
Exactly. And I do appreciate your service. I was behind the scenes before and then got to sit on this with you as well. And, you know, a lot of the snide comments probably did come from me. But it was reciprocal as well because you did a lot of that as well. But we won't get into that, we won't go right here. And Dr. Evans, I look forward to working with you further within the community, stuff that we're working on together, and look forward to those conversations community-wide. So I do thank you for your service as well.
Jimmy, did you want to make announcements?
President Nuttall?
Yes. Ms. Thompson?
This is, yes, this is Angela Thompson. I've had my hand up. I'd like to speak in open forum, please.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Honorable Counsel. Thank you for allowing me to speak in front of you tonight. We wanted to be there in person, but due to the weather, we were unable to. First of all, I want to speak to, I believe that the veterans asked to use the roundhouse, and I 100% fully support our veterans. My oldest son is a veteran, a sergeant in the U.S. Army. And so I have the utmost respect for the veterans and what they've given up to serve this country and to serve our family and serve their families. But I'm 54 years old, and I grew up with my grandparents, Mary Leader Nuttall and Salmon Effie Osborne. And from the time that I was grown up, and I grew up in Pawnee, didn't move away until 1998 when I moved to Norman to get further my education. So I'm aware of our culture, I'm aware of our ceremonies, I'm aware of our doings. And ever since the time I was little, we have always honored our morning ceremony, mourn for four days. During that four days, everything stops. That drum don't beat. And unfortunately, yes, it happens during homecoming. But I think that if that family wants to use that roundhouse, I hope that you all will honor it during that time because that's most important. Everything stops. That's one of our oldest traditions that we still have in our tribe that came from us from down, from Nebraska. And, you know, I think we need to honor that. So I just want to say that much. The other point I want to speak to is the HIP funding. I have been in self-governance for 24 years. I worked as the Self-Governance Director for the Sacagawea Nation. I worked as a Self-Governance Specialist for the Cherokee Nation. I've owned my company along with my mother since 2010, doing government-to-government negotiations in self-governance. This HIP amendment is not a normal practice. It's a normal practice. All tribes that receive funding from the BIA through the Office of Self-Governance receive their funding in amendments, amendment forms. This HIP funding has been unfunded for a number of years. So there is a process where an individual, and it's open to any individual within the tribe to make the application to the Southern Plains Regional Office for our area in Pawnee. They have the opportunity to make that application and apply for that money. Since we're a self-governance tribe, that's the funding mechanism that they provide to the Pawnee Nation for that Pawnee tribal member to receive those dollars that they applied for and implement them. They don't pay it directly to that individual. It's paid to a contractor through an invoice. And yes, usually, it's only $20,000. However, it can be more because it's actually end-of-the-year dollars usually that are made available for certain special projects. So with that being said, there was nothing done out of the norm or underhanded that would require an investigation. Self-govern, you all have been self-governance since, what, 2022? Our company is the one that did the negotiation agreements with the compact and the multi-year funding agreement. And I both, all of you all, except for maybe, I don't know, I don't know, Doc, if you were on the council at that time in 2022. But if you were, if you all had been on the council for 2022, you all went through that. We also did a training for you all back in 2019, or 2019 or early 2020 in regard to self-governance practices. Now, I know that's training that, you know, that it's, self-governance is an ever-evolving system. Things change year to year, and it's a learning curve. You learn more things and more things about self-governance and what you can do. And it wasn't the Office of Self-Governance trying to say you need to do this. It doesn't require negotiation. And even through your compact and your funding agreement, that each of you that were on that council that voted allows for the president to negotiate and sign off on those funding agreements and those amendments that come down. So that's been approved. So if there's, so that's some of the tenants of self-governance. So this funding that this person applied for is going to their tribe, to you, because they're a tribal member. As a funding mechanism, they're putting it through your multi-year funding agreement as an amendment. And in order to receive those dollars, the tribe has to sign an amendment. And then, yes, you all have to implement them through a contract with a construction company. So that's just a little bit of education when you all look this. I don't think you all need a committee, but that's certainly your purview, under your purview and your prerogative. I just offer that information to you all as you all make your decisions going forward. And if you have any additional questions, feel free to contact me. You know, we're working, we're currently working with your established health advisory board, doing your, establishing your health board as well as establishing policies and procedures. Your health act you've already passed, as well as looking at additional program function services and activities to transfer under your IHS compact and funding agreement. So I just offer that for you all and for you all to consider as you're making your decision on these dollars. And further, if you all want, I mean, and I agree, if you all want the rest of the tribe members to have access to that, you all should have went to Southern Plains and announced it. This has been, I mean, this is not anything new. Southern Plains has been doing this for years. And not just Southern Plains, but there's, the Muskogee Area Office operates the same way, functions the same way. So I just offer that too for your consideration as you move on because this individual that needed the service still needs the service, and you're letting them lie in limbo while you all make a decision that's hindering them from moving forward and getting a home that is substantial. I'm not putting the guilt on you, I'm just ensuring you that you said that everybody should have an opportunity. They all had the opportunity to apply for this. And as council people, if there's programs and monies available, we had ARPA funds if there was a need for housing. Why didn't those ARPA funds, why wasn't that need identified? And those ARPA funds provided to all the people that needed housing issues or housing repairs? That could have been done. I'm not trying to argue or anything. I'm just trying to let you know what's, this is the normal process. There was nothing underhanded done about it. It's a normal process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Treasurer Chapman?
Yes, thank you, Angela, for your comments. I am just going to say I stand by my investigative report. There is a lot more to it. I am concerned about nepotism. Nepotism should not be used by this body or consultants, and it is your family, your family. I have tried to be quiet to get through this, but this has just gone beyond anything for you to get on here and lecture us when it was you and your family. It's nepotism. Our leaders should not sit up here and use their positions for their families. I am completely aware, I have all the documentation. And I would like to say that I, we heard your recommendations, but I still say that this council voted, and we're going to go forward with it. And it is investigative because it is one family, and it is your family.
I don't have any comments or any qualms about the recommendations that have been put forward. And I think it just adds to the infrastructure that needs to be developed for the nation in moving forward to address, you know, any future projects. And I, you know, my recommendation even further is to contact the Southern Plains Regional Office and, you know, inform them of your concerns. And that way, you know, it comes from the federal agency, whether it's the Office of Self-Governance or the Southern Plains Regional Office, to, you know, like I said, further your investigation and hear the concerns that you have so you can hear from them directly.
And, President, and all, thank you.
And to, you know, you're saying that I'm employed by them. I'm not employed by Leader.
You told us that you, when you first came on, that, what was the word?
Full disclosure.
Full disclosure, I'm employed with Leader. You said that. That's why I'm assuming that you're employed with Leader. You told us that when you came on board. When you came, your first meeting, you said, full disclosure, I work for Leader.
I previously worked for Leader, yes. I wrote grants for them. Yes, but I have not worked with Leader since I became the president.
Okay. Well, we didn't know that. I just assumed, I just assumed that you were still writing contracts.
No.
Anyways, we need to, if that's not the case, I apologize. But I'd like to know how that all fits.
Well, until the election is certified, that will be addressed once the election is certified. Should she be seated, yes, she would have to recuse herself from any other existing contract. That's common practice.
But can she also be paid from Leader, from behavioral health?
No.
And then be on this council? Does it work like that?
No.
So she'll have to leave Leader?
President Nuttall, I would like to respond.
Yes, she would need to leave Leader. There can be no conflict of interest. Okay. Anything else for open forum? Yes, Ms. Teeter.
Good evening. Gosh, I have all kinds of notes here, but after everything, I hope I can find my right spots. I guess, first, I am Leanna Chapman Teeter. I was on the council years ago, and I'm an elder now. And I attend most of the council meetings that I can make it to. My partner over here, we're the only two, and I'm talking to the people listening. We're the only two sitting here. We're kind of lonesome, aren't we? And today, tonight, I ask for a bottle of water, and they don't even bring anything since it's just a few of us here. But anyway, first, I want you all to know, and again, I'm talking to the people listening, and if there were anyone here, I would be talking to them too. and if there were anyone here, I would be talking to them too. I do, I also agree with Sammy about the UNDRIP. It's the Pawnee United Nation Declaration of Respect for Indigenous People. And I agree with her, we do not need it in our tribe. If you, and most of you, probably all of you, do not know what it really is, so you need to do some research on that. I also agree with Sammy about the Declaration of Respect, which is a part of UNDRIP, and this has been used already. It removed four elder Pawnee women, including me, from a commission, as commissioners, and we had no due process, and this has continued on for a year now. So I would really appreciate it if you all would, you Pawnee tribal people who complain, I get tired of hearing the complaints. I have nothing to do with this, but I hear all kinds, and I agree with them. And so please, would you research the Declaration of Respect under the UNDRIP because these things are going to be coming up, I'm sure. The seed preservation, my family brought seeds down from Nebraska. We handed them over to that program. We have never been acknowledged about anything. We haven't, I have no idea what become of them or anything. I do know they were named, in the very beginning, they were not named accurately. They were named after a Cheyenne Rappahoe family until I corrected her. So we need more people to get involved with that, that did grow up here, that had family. You grew up, I grew up with this corn in my, in my dad's backyard every year. So we need to get this back to the tribe because right now it is, I don't know what's that called, that business?
501(c)(3).
50 what?
(c)(3).
50123?
(c)(3).
(c)(3), whatever. It is her personal business. The tribe approved it, the council here approved it, but do we have any control over it now? Can I get my corn back? No, they're all shaking their heads. They don't know anything about it. So I would appreciate it if you would look into that and do some, get that, get, I don't know, get, let us know what's going on with it. Also, I agree with Sammy about the Pawnee Nation Evening Star. I don't appreciate what they've done. When the, I cannot remember. Okay, anyway, they, I'm trying to think back to the form, the original form. Anyway, I do not support the Evening Star. I have heard, as a tribal member, I have not heard of anything that they, any funding they have provided to the Pawnee Nation. Have they? No? And from the meetings I attended before the Behavioral Health Center was, when it was still a thought, I know they were trying to take the money and take the, I guess, take the money and provide it to the Pawnee Nation. It sounded like they would give us what they thought we needed after they took what they want. And they can let us know everything about it correctly. Do they ever turn in reports to us, to the people? Do you all get one?
They've been suspended for over a year.
Oh, I did not know that. See? I did not know that. We need more. And I'm here a lot. Thank you, Donna. Okay, let's see. So I commend Sammy for her strength and, can't read my writing, honor in providing positive leadership to all our Pawnee people. Even though, and I know you and I have clashed, but you have always spoken for the people, including all the people, not just your family.
Right.
Yeah. So I just want to commend you, and I believe we're going to miss you when you leave.
Thank you.
And so I hope and pray that each one of our Pawnee people will seriously take time for the Pawnee Nation and start attending these business meetings. It's pretty much a private thing, and I think if more people would be here, we would, we would be a better nation for sure because everyone would know what was going on and might give some positive ideas to the council. And so with that, I do hope to see more people attending. Thank you, everyone. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Teeter, for your comments. We can extend an invitation to the seed preservation where we can forward your request to ask about the, and then maybe they can give a status of their current activities or so within their organization. I believe they had a prayer service or something recently, within the past two weeks or so. So they are active, I'm assuming, in doing activities, the extent of it, I'm not for sure. Go ahead.
The one thing that concerns me is my family talked about, when she asked for the corn, we talked about it, and we did not, we all agreed we're going to give it to the tribe, you know, but it doesn't seem like it belongs to the tribe. It seems like it's a private, under a private enterprise. Is that right? Do we have access? No, we don't. So that's what disturbs me, and I don't, I don't know of any of you that are concerned about that. But my grandmother brought that down here, so it's a little more important to me. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Announcements, Jamie?
We have some online open forum questions. One comes from Ms. Ramona Horse Chief. She asks, referring to the HIP award, what family, Pawnee people as a whole, elders, because she's needing skirting and she's a widow, plus there are many other elders who can benefit from that program, I'm assuming. The next question is from Ms. Gina Francis. She said, "Just to clear things up, the nonprofit organization Pawnee Seed Preservation Society did not request a lease renewal. They purchased buildings downtown." So stop the gossip and the rumor mill. The next one we have is Ms. Carla Knife Chief. She put, "The BIA HIP program is or was for extremely low-income families in our area. It was an application to BIA and ADARCO with attached documents. A representative will come look over and visit site or homes to see the need. If the cost to repair the home exceeded $35,000, then they would suggest replacing the home and do a call for contractor bids to complete work. They would select the contractor then proceed. When I worked at the housing, I would assist families with the application process. Many families were selected in our area, and most awarded were for replacement and a few for remodeling. Things have, may have changed, and we do need to look at taking over BIA project programs and managing leases, and we can. I just wanted to say what I know about the HIP Housing Improvement Program." And then the last one is from Mr. Sean Nordwall. He said, "Many other tribes offer HIP funds as a program where you have to apply to the tribe, and they are not used for one single individual." And then we, okay. So some of the announcements we have coming up this week and then, and next week as well. Just as a reminder, every Tuesday is yoga with Lisa at the Pawnee Nation Wellness Gym, which is located at 806 Morris Road. Every Wednesday, we have the AA Support Group at 7:00 PM at the SAT Building, which is 311 Maintenance Road. We also have the Pawnee Language Class, which starts at 6:00, and Cultural Class to Follow, which is at the Pawnee Nation Museum, located at 657 Harrison Street. And then every Thursday at noon is the Will Brarity Program, which is also at the SAT Building. This week, tomorrow is the last day for protest deadlines at 5:00 PM, and I believe you emailed those to the Election Commission. This Cultural Resources, Cultural Advisory Committee will be meeting tomorrow at 5:00 PM at the CRD offices. Gaming will be meeting Thursday, May 8th, at 5:00 PM on Teams. Friday, May 9th, is Muffins in the Morning for Mother's Day at the Pawnee Nation Learning Center, and it's also our Pawnee High School graduation as well. There will be early release tomorrow as well, and no school Thursday or Friday. Sunday, the 11th, is Mother's Day. Tuesday, May 13th, at 10:00 AM, is the Civil Travel Court with Criminal to Follow, as well as the Housing Authorities Meeting at 11:30 at the Housing Office located at 126 Eagle Chief. The Iri Tatutu Kichisu will be having a planning forum at 5:30 at Rome Chief, which is located at 810 Morris Road. The Intergovernmental Affairs Committee will be meeting at 7:00 PM on Teams. On May 14th, which is a Wednesday, the Food Distribution Program will be closed for truck delivery. The Property Meeting will begin at 1:30 on Teams. Thursday, May 15th, the Budget Committee has a meeting at 10:00 AM. And then Saturday, May 17th, if there are no protests or anything, was the inauguration for the incoming Pawnee Business Council members. And then on Sunday, May 18th, is the Kick-a-Hockey Dance at noon at the Pawnee Nation Campgrounds, I think, but in case of weather, it will be at the Round House. And those are all the, oh, Four Bands has new hours. They will be open every Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday from 12:30 to 5:30. And then the Stonewolf also will be having new play hours as well, which are... Every Monday is the Nifty 50 at Stonewolf, which will be from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Every Wednesday is This Way or That, which is every Wednesday at 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Every Thursday, Age to Perfection, all day long. There will be Trivia Night on May 13th. The Trading Post Casino has their specials, and it's every Thursday down the rabbit hole from 7:00 to 9:00. And every Saturday, Queen of Hearts from 1:00 to 3:00. And those are all the announcements.
Anyone else have any announcements in the upcoming committee meetings? There are none. We'll move to item number nine, set the next meeting date. And I have the next meeting date for May the 20th, 2025, at 5:30 PM. And then item number 10, adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn? Got a motion by Councilwoman Butler. Is there a second?
I will second.
Second by Dr. Evans. Let's call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Gardner, yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Aho.
Jean Evans?
Bye.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned at 7:44 PM. Thank you, council.